I would like to call this meeting of Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon and Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total one million sixty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Stacy Templeton.
Yes.
I threw you off, didn't I? Councilman Collier. He's absent.
Man, the bugs.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
He's your councilman.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. And Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Bids?
We have none, sir.
We have no bids tonight. Ordinance and resolutions.
We have none, sir.
We have none tonight. New business.
Mayor, City Council, you'll find in your packet something that may look familiar to you. This is the chapter one hundred that had been discussed previously for Crown Hospitality LLC in 2018. This is a incentives package to promote the construction of a three-story Hampton Inn hotel on the Goodwin property. This is something that was previously reviewed and approved by City Council. It has been previously discussed with now two ambulance district administrators and two school superintendents. They do support the project. And obviously, I think it's something that that we've considered moving forward with in the past. But I did want to put it in front of you and and basically ask for a green light for us to pursue consulting with bond counsel. We've used Mark Grimm and Jason Terry at Gilmore Bell to repackage this incentive package for the purpose of the construction of a Hampton Inn. And I wanted to get your your thoughts and your comments and and a thumbs up or a thumbs down for us to proceed.
I'm still in favor of it. I think we need it. We need another good hotel in this, the way the city's progressing. And I think once they're there, it will bring in more business to fill that up. So I mean, I still fart, so.
Greg, could you, there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this thing as far as, you know, the cost that gone up to sixteen million. I think it was for maybe ten million. Interest rates are up and so on. But, you know, we've got I fifty-five here now that is expanding and with that development is really taking off over there and so on. So could you give me an idea how the, like, this tax incentive package is, how they work and so on?
Sure.
Make that a little more clear, perhaps?
Sure. And, and, yeah, I've kind of said everything up there. And really, the the last two pages in the presentation here are the, are the, are the numbers pages, the breakdown on, on how this all works. So initially, Crown Hospitality came to us asking for a fifteen-year property tax abatement at a hundred percent. They were looking for a full abatement, which would include a, a reduction or basically a waiver of city sales taxes. They asked for a waiver of the city's tourism tax, and they asked for a fifteen-year hundred percent real estate property tax abatement and a one-hundred percent property tax abatement. And that, this was back in 2017, 2018. Discussions back and forth with the folks, Nick Hartzler mainly with Steadfast City, negotiating on behalf of Festus Hospitality. We said initially that the tourism tax was a, you don't touch it. It needs to stay in there. We felt that all the hotels should be treated equally and the same. We felt that a fifteen-year abatement was too long. We did discuss a roll-off in, say, years seven or eight, nine, and ten. But at the end of the day, what we ended up doing was putting a pass-through on the personal property. So while this is an abatement of all the new real property value, the existing real property value is still collected and distributed to the various authorities. The, the, the real property, the new value would be abated at a hundred percent for the ten-year term. Yeah, the, the value, I should say, the, the cost of constructing the hotel has gone up considerably in the last seven, eight years. And while there has been development in the Goodwin development, when, when we talked about this the first time, there wasn't anything there at all. I think, given everything else that's happening around us, is just going to put more pressure on our need for additional hotel space. I know the Holiday Inn Express runs at almost ninety percent plus on occupancy. They stay busy. I can't speak for the other hotels, but I can't speak for that one.
What happens if they pull the same thing they did last time and don't build? And, you know, we've got this, this agreement that is just sitting in limbo like, like it did.
You know, as I talked to with Nick when this came up recently, and I know Mark's been part of some of these conversations, at least with the hotel owner from Festus Hospitality, Mr. Patel, or at least the engineers and architects doing the work for him. We've been kicking this one around for a while, and I, I made it pretty clear to Nick that my comfort level with bringing this back to you to proceed has to be hinged on some form of performance guarantees from Festus Hospitality. That we want some deadlines or dates in this financing agreement in order for this to work. Because I think you guys have been extremely patient. You know, we let this, let this go for a long while before we eventually pulled it off the table. We thought we had it started back up again, and it came off the table, and here we are, basically, the third time around. So if, if we're going to do this, I think absolutely part of this process needs to include some performance incentives on their, on their side. They need to hit some deadlines. Go ahead and turn your mic on, Jim.
Would we start all over as far as the agreements that we?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the, the agreement would stay fundamentally the same. The, the numbers inside of it have obviously changed. The dates inside of it have changed. But I think the part that we're going to want to see added to it is you're going to break ground by this date, and you're going to open the doors by this date, which we didn't have in the original agreement.
But Greg, didn't we have something worked out with them on the sales tax of the?
Materials?
Of the materials and stuff?
That, that's part of the deal and still part of the deal. So that's the, the abatement of the local sales tax.
Right. But, but to me, that doesn't even make sense because, like Brian was saying, you know, it was one price then, and it's another price now. So they're not even getting penalized for, for pulling the plug and walking away. And they walk back in and, you know, everything's hunky-dory. We can do the same thing again. I, I don't think that's right. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it should be a little bit stiffer, some stiffer regulations on how we're going to accept them. I mean, like, like Bobby said, well, yeah, we could use another hotel, but I just feel like they're pulling all the strings here, and we're just going along with it.
But I will say that the, 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 the sales tax incentive is, is a abatement of just the, the local. So it's the part that we control, and it incentivizes them to buy the materials locally. If they don't buy them where the Festus sales tax is applicable, then it's really no benefit at all.
That, I think that's a gray area, though, anyhow, is if you're bringing in materials in another state or another county or anything, it's, I think it's illegal. But a lot of people are doing that. So, yeah. I, I just think I'm welcoming the idea. I just still have a lot of questions, and, and I'm just not.
Well, we're not, oh, no, we're, you know, in 2018, you know, when this first came up, I think all of you, at least all the, I think most all of you were here in, at that time. It was, it was, let's go. And we thought we had a developer that was ready to go. And we had a new development that had just opened up, and we were looking to put something, you know, we were looking to plant a flag, and it didn't happen. You know, COVID played a big part of that. I mean, the guy was supposed to break ground in early 2020, and clearly that didn't happen. The delays since then have, have certainly not been all pandemic-related, but in part pandemic-related.
Is it ninety units or ninety-two? It was both on the same page. One says ninety, one says ninety-two.
Good question. Mark's like, yeah, no.
We have not, we don't have any construction drawings yet.
Okay. It's on page forty-four.
Six months ago, and we have been getting calls from tradesmen asking about my code runner because they've got drawings they're bidding on. They're moving forward at this time.
The, the format, central design is the, kind of the?
I was just curious.
Cookie cutter, you know, the, they, they pull these things out of a box. So I would, I would assume it'd be a ninety unit.
So when you talked about performance incentive or whatever that may be, and kind of going along with what Jim said, if they don't meet X deadline by such, is there a way that we can impact the agreement to say failure to?
Absolutely.
Failure to produce will result in X, Y, and Z.
And I think that's the discussion that, that we'll need to have with, Brian would be involved, obviously, bond counsel, Jason and Mark at Gilmore Bell, and then with Nick with Steadfast, who's representing Festus Hospitality, is, you know, we're, we're going to want these deadlines in there, and if you don't meet those deadlines, then, then what's the penalty?
Correct. I mean, I, I have a feeling that they are going to revert back to their costs and fifty percent more, their interest costs, et cetera. But ultimately, they're being handed a, a great opportunity. It's just a matter of, you know, fulfilling their, what they're saying they're going to do, so.
But you, one thing, one thing I wanted to add, over the last twenty-plus years, we've had numerous things come into the city that we've done, similar things, but it, it brings up one question to citizens that I've been asked several times, is the last thing we need is a hotel. And we just make the tip for where things fit. We, we, we just have the zoning for, for the hotel, and we don't necessarily have control of what goes in what space. But a lot of people think that, that somehow we pick and choose what goes where. We're just, we're just setting down the ground rules for what can or can't. One other question that was posed by one of the councilmen is, is there going to be initial costs? Like, will our ladder truck cover a third-floor establishment? Is it going to be the additional cost to the city? There were possibly, we need some considerations if, if, I, I don't know if Jeff knows off the top of his head, but it's a third floor, I'd be.
I'm getting, I'm getting nods over here of, of the affirmative. Go ahead, chief.
We can reach the third floor.
Yeah. So that's my concern, that we don't take on any additional cost. I know at one time we had some additional tornado sirens and things of that nature. When we get closer to that, I guess question to Brian, is there any considerations for the Festus to encourage them to continue on with, with the deal and build? You know, we have a restaurant there. Hotel normally goes with a nice restaurant over there with the, you know, Texas Roadhouse. So I just want to make real sure that we're not going to need anything that they may have to work with us a little bit. So just off the top of my head with some over the last many moons, that was one of my concerns. I know we're not that far along, but, you know, I just want to make sure that there's not something that we have to pony up a bunch more money to cover this additional thing. And, you know, once again, for the citizens that think we're picking this hotel, you know, we set up where things can go. That's, that's what we do, and now we're setting up, you know, how it will be built and funded and all that. So I just want to make that very clear. You know, there's always that other side of the story that seems to be popular on social media, and the citizens that just want to know what's what, so.
Sure. We'll have those conversations with the developer, and that's something Greg and I will discuss.
Greg, got a question for you. I know you've been around a, a lot of townships over the years. Have you ever encountered anything with Hampton Inn on any of those?
As far as a, a financing package or, or, I have not been directly involved with a Hampton incentive. I have been on, on others hotel developments, directly or indirectly. The, this particular developer, this is their, kind of their MO. They bring a mid-to, I, I guess we would call it a, a mid-upper tier hotel to community and, and will ask for some assistance.
Sounds like their abatements, especially when they got started, was pretty strong. I mean, they need us more, probably more than we need them, but, you know. Guess what everybody thinks about this?
The way I look at it, if I may. When James Hardy starts building over there, and they bring in their own workers, their own companies, where are those guys going to stay? They're certainly not going to stay in Crystal because Crystal doesn't have any hotels. And we don't have that many hotels, but if we can get this kicked going and get it up by the time that that plant starts, we're going to be, we're going to be in a good position.
Yeah, I don't want to see us lose it.
No.
To another city. Not saying they can't go somewhere else. So we have the room. We could do it. Let's not pass this up.
I know Councilman Cook and I had a chance to talk, Councilman Weiner and I, on Friday. I don't know if Mike's having some technical issues. But if, if, if so, I think he's echoed some of the similar concerns related to performance, making sure that these folks are actually going to put shovels in the ground, concerns over the impact that it could have to the other taxing jurisdictions who we've talked to. And, and this will take a while for us to package this together. We're not, we're not coming back to you at the next meeting or the meeting after that and saying, here we go. Let's pass this ordinance. This will take a little while. And obviously, we've added some wrinkles to this that I get a sense that you feel good about, that, that we do put some type of, some, some deadlines in here and that there are some penalties for not meeting those because, because of the amount of time it's taken for us to put this together.
You, you know, Greg, it kind of reminds me of the airport deal. You know, that just drug.
Almost at it. Almost at it. Almost at it.
It just drug on and on and on, and then eventually we put some, uh, things in place where he was going to get penalized for, for not, you know, coming through and getting his financing. And it seems to me like guys like that are professionals, and, and they'll just beat us to death and drag it on and on and on. But, I mean, you know, the thing we need to look at is he already owns the ground. He got the ground at a great price. You know, there's no reason to give the store away, I don't think. I think they're going to build the hotel regardless. But I just don't think we should overdo what we did the first time.
Oh, no, and we're not.
Yeah.
We're not. I think.
That's all. I'm a hundred percent.
It's essentially the same deal. With the caveats that we just talked about, and those haven't been fleshed out yet. That'll be conversations for, for Brian and Jason and Mark and I to have, that then we'll have something to bring back to you. But really, what I need tonight is, is the okay to go ahead and have those conversations. And I, I get a sense that everyone's on board with, with that. I don't know if we need to, to vote on that because there's really nothing to vote on, other than for me to continue to do some more work.
Hey, Greg, I apologize. Thanks for speaking up for me. I was having technical difficulties. But you reminded me, and you may want to remind the rest of the council, there is income coming from this, from business personal property that will be assessed every year, and I believe you think it's going to be an approximation of nine hundred to a million dollars in business personal property that's still assessed at thirty-two percent times the tax rate. Is that correct still?
Yeah, no, that, that is correct. And I, it may have been lost in my discussion of the original deal. What their original asks were and where we ended up was that the personal property on this is a pass-through. So while the real estate amount is abated, the personal property, so all the fixtures and furnishings that go in this place that are assessed will be passed through to all the taxing jurisdictions. If everyone's comfortable with that, then I will, Brian and I will seek out our friends at Gilmore Bell, and I'll have a talk with Nick Hartzler at Steadfast City first thing tomorrow morning, and we'll get rolling on this.
I, I think we ought to take a vote on it, and then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to allow Greg to go forward with this project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Let's go forward. Old business.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, I, I wanted to share this with you. One, because it's been something we've been talking about for the last twelve months or so. But also, to give some credit to, obviously, Michael's going to get the big credit here in a minute, and I do mean credit. But Shane Dollar, our right-of-way manager, put together this report, and he, he sent it to me and staff last week. And I, I called Shane up on Monday, and I said, I want to put this in the council packet. I want council to see this. That the Edgewood Water Main Project Phases One and Two are complete, and you can see for yourself nearly eleven thousand three hundred feet of water main, twenty-two new fire hydrants, forty-nine water valves, a hundred and fifty-nine service connections, and a hundred and thirty-seven feet of stormwater pipe that we did as part of that project. CE Contracting was an excellent partner on this whole deal. We can't say enough about the job that they did. They, they attacked us with the urgency that we felt. They, they took that to heart and, and ran with it. So definitely a, a great job by CE. Short of the overlays, which will come at a later date, which will finish off all those side streets, but also Edgewood, Cedar, and Cypress, the three main streets in the area, this, that will put this project to bed. But Michael had the best news today. Would you like to share that with them?
Under budget by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Three sixty-five seventeen.
Congratulations.
So.
That's great. That's great.
So this was originally one point four, almost one point five, and the total cost of the project came in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars under budget. So savings from the original change order, because it was a change order to go from Phase One to Phase Two. But done and done in miraculous time, and, and glad that we're able to finally address a longstanding problem for the residents in the Edgewood neighborhood. That's all I wanted to share about that.
That just helps us out for more projects that we can use the money for. I mean, more water lines and mains and all that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Good.
Is there anything else for old business? Apparently not. Councilman Boyer.
First of all, I'd like to just tell Greg that he had a nice write-up in the leader paper. That was real nice. Congratulations on that. That was, we read all of it, and Jason as well. Compliments to the Water Department and Street Departments for all the work that you guys have been doing. We get a lot done, and there's a lot still to do yet, but you guys are doing a good number on it. And the Police Department, fast action on the juveniles that were caught. That was a, a good thing, and a lot of people are talking about that one right now. So hopefully, the parents will get more involved in stuff like that. The barn and splash pad. Looking forward to the twelve o'clock meeting tomorrow. And somebody said that you was buying lunch. Is that right? Is that just a rumor?
Pick up a Crave case on the way.
That's all I have, Sam.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Weiner.
Just a couple of things. That Hampton Inn, I think that'll be a game changer for the area when it comes in, but it's got to come in. And I think that we need to make some guarantees that it does start on time and that it does do what it says it's going to do. So looking forward to that. Yeah, Dave, the Red Barn tomorrow at noon. That's, that's going to be a good thing to do. The Edgewood Water Main Project, that's, that's just such a huge deal, and, and good job with that, Mike, because that's a, that's just wonderful news on the, on the numbers with that. Because that's been, that's been a thorn in our, our side, and now we've proceeded at a rather rapid pace, to say the least, and it's finished. So congratulations on, on getting that done. You know, the juveniles that were having that problem with the doors and so on, that good, great work, chief, with, with that also. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Oh, pardon me. Okay. A, a little late, but the Mardi Gras parade that was on Main Street was, uh, they blew it out of the water, really. I, when Luke Tatro came in here and talked about a Mardi Gras parade, I was kind of lukewarm, huh? Lukewarm? Okay, thank you. And, but I heard just, the crowds were great. The enthusiasm was great. And probably next year is just going to be, you know, something even, even better than that. So that's about all I have. Just keeping going forward. It's just like the, the machines here tonight. You know, we're advancing with electronically. It was, it was just probably, I don't know, three years ago, four years ago, we were getting paper stacks of fifty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five pages a piece up here, and now that's not happening anymore. So we are slowly entering the electronic age, but I think we're, I think we're doing it well. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Dennis.
Yeah, there's a lot been said already. I, one thing, one thing that, that kind of bothers me is, is a lot of the attention we get on the social media about what we're not doing. And, you know, there's another side of the story. You know, we did a hundred and thirty-five tickets, a hundred and forty-three stops. Our fire department trains every day. They're always ready to go. Our streets, our water, the, the advancements that we're making to fix infrastructure issues.
Uh, to fix infrastructure issues, uh, is at a, is is at a great pace. Uh, but we never, I guess, good news is never news. Uh, we have wonderful parks, we have recreation going on, so I just wanna reiterate to everybody that makes that happen. Uh, thank you, thank you, despite some of the negativity that's always seem to see. Is uh, you know, I know this council cares, this mayor, and this administration, we work hard for the people and. Like I said, not everything is in our control, uh, when the streets are done, we've made huge advances on our water issues. Uh, you know, so I just wanna say thank you, everybody, cause I think sometimes only part we see is the part that people wanna. Uh, complain about, and we have real complaints and we take them very seriously, but we work very hard and 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 we have a lot of pride. Uh, in this city and and we're working hard, just like the huge, huge savings on that water project. And uh, you know, that money goes back into the system for us to fix something else. We are in the fixing, repairing, maintaining business, and we take it very seriously, and and I. Sometimes I think the folks that work for us and uh, you know, that it brings them down a little bit to hear some of the negativity. When there's always another side of the story, and we take it very seriously, so I just wanna thank everybody for the wonderful job that they're doing. And we will continue to do our best for the the city, our citizens, and the employees that uh, take care of these things, so. Once again, a huge thank you, and that's all I have, sir.
All right, sir, thank you, Councilman Cook.
Um, I think everything's been said, needs to be said. I just need to know, uh, or it's Greg buying lunch before or after the ceremony tomorrow, and thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah. Councilwoman Templeton.
I don't know how you can just state what everybody else just stated, but it's true, and I think when you look around Festus, you see not, you see progress, not on one level, but mil- many levels. And I also think the old adage is true, if something bad happens, somebody will tell seven people. If something good happens, you might tell one. So perspective, have to put things in perspective, and on that note, question, um. Now that I realize we just had snow and ice very recently, but that's gone, any idea when Spire may be coming back? To Festus, or can I decorate the steel plates for Easter?
Would you like to tell her about the pre-construction meeting we're having?
We have a pre-construction meeting for North Mill, just not this week, but next week. The area manager for Spire reached out to me, he said that they are having to finish something else up, but there's only two weeks of work left in that area. They're very close to being done.
Right, cause I've gotten some complaint, the street is a little rough these, these days as well. The plates are one thing, they're just there, but the. The gravel is just like eroding out of all of those spots where they put, they didn't completely patch, so like up it. That'd be ninth.
Yeah.
And further down, so.
We let them know there's a bit of a countdown now, we have to start the project, and so. They said that if they don't start it this week, they're supposed to start it next, and it should be done very quickly.
Wonderful, I will pass that along. Thank you, and I'll see everybody at the barn tomorrow.
Councilman Vans.
Ditto on all, on everybody's comment, and uh, I'm gonna try to be there tomorrow. It's just been busy. Um. I know you said you addressed that car wash situation. I know that's been a nightmare over there. Um. Is there anything we can possibly do, or we just have to let it ride?
You know, the. I haven't heard back from Club Car Wash, um, what was it, uh, two weeks ago on the heels of our, our meeting? Um, last month, uh, I did reach out to their corporate offices. And just like, you know, you gotta, the 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 entrance, the entrance exit is what it is. Um, uh, and obviously the popularity of the car wash, especially on Tuesdays, it seems like. Uh, when they do their discounts, uh, is. It it, it blows them away, so um, but obviously we do need to see if there's, if there's, if there's something that. They know of, that they've dealt with in other locations, that they can do here. Um, it, but that's a conversation I haven't had yet.
I mean, I understand when it's not busy, you make your left no big deal. But it seems like it's been a lot more increased here lately, and. The yelling, screaming, almost cars hitting, and yeah, it's um, gotten a lot of attention and road rage. People coming down that, even though people are pulling over to the side on the right side, but. People get mad, and they're, it's, I've seen a lot of close calls, and I'm sitting there trying to do the right thing. And uh, people just asked me, and I said, I don't know if we're allowed to put an ordinance, no left turn or not. I mean, I don't know if that's something we can do or not. Where where you have to go up and come in the other way and not make a left turn in there. I know it, when it slows down, it's an inconvenience. But same time, it's a safety thing to come in one way. But I mean, that's, I didn't know if that's something chief has to, I mean, what has to recommend, or we recommend it, or.
I I, that would be, it would probably fall under our, our, our traffic calming, so to speak. Um, here, we're dealing with a high volume at certain points and times during the day. I mean, we could have some. Engineering analysis done, but I I'd like to have the conversation with Club Car Wash first.
Right.
To see if there's anything that we can do together, uh, before we start uh, having an engineer take a look at uh, possible solutions there.
Yeah, it just, yeah, I I mean, it's just something I hate to see. The way people have been getting a little irate, I hate to see something happen, and the way people have no problem pulling out a gun nowadays, it's good. I don't wanna see it go that far, just because of road rage or whatever reason it happened. I mean, people's tempers are just, boom, they don't care. So uh, but other than that, everything looks good. I'm I'm really glad to see, hear Michael tell us the savings, and I. I'm hoping we can do a lot more uh, lines and water mains and everything else, stuff, anywhere we can improve, I hope we can. And um, that's about it, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Tannen.
Uh, just a couple of things. I was looking at Greg's pictures from Friday. And uh, kind of reminded me uh, something, kind of what Kevin was saying is uh. You know, we all flush our toilets and we don't care, we don't know where everything goes, and. There's a lot of people behind the scenes that are taking care of all those things, and uh, but looking at those pictures also. You know, you you always hear about six, eight people uh, standing around the hole looking at a. A water break or something, and one guy working, but uh, nobody really cares about. Guys being in a hole at three AM when it's twenty degrees outside, and so I just wanna say I appreciate all the work you guys do and uh. Uh, you guys make my phone uh, a little bit less angry, so that's good. But I appreciate that, and um, other than that, that's all I have, and uh, what time should we be there tomorrow for the lunch?
Um. Sounds like lunch will follow, um, so, yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, we will. Well, I I'll just uh. Everything's been pretty much covered.
Oh, nothing, go ahead.
Okay, everything's been pretty much covered, uh, I agree with everything everybody said. We have a great city, and I wanna keep it that way. We all wanna keep it that way, and it wouldn't be that way if it wasn't. For the Street Department, the Water Department, the Parks Department, Police Department, the Fire Department. All the. Administrative personnel that we have. I mean, you know. I realize that. You know, I don't get many phone calls, I'll be honest. I don't. Some of the ones that I do get, no, I don't need your phone. Some of the ones I do get are not so good, but. Every department is doing a good job, and you all are doing a great job as being councilman. I mean, and I tell people that when they ask me about it. We have a great working relationship between you all. The city administrator and myself. And that's what makes things happen. Especially Greg and Michael on a day-to-day basis. I don't have to worry. If I don't get in here, that's okay, you know, cause I know things are being taken care of. And I'm being informed about what's going on. Having said that, I will entertain a motion to, wait, we don't have anybody to fight over it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.